Good afternoon, everyone. Um, welcome to the Housing and Economic Development Committee hearing. I am James Torrance, Chair of the Committee and Representative of the 7th District. Today, the committee will hear, um, Council Bill 250019, Midtown Community Benefits and Management Authority Establishment. In attendance today, we have Council President Z. Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, we have members of the committee, um, Vice Chair Odette Ramos of the 14th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We also have Zach Blanchard, Council Member of the 11th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We also have Jermaine Jones, Council Member of the 12th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Um, Members of the Office of the President are Ethan, as well as Samoya Gardner, um, Aaron DeGrathright, and then Dexter Lockme is present as well. Let's begin with, uh... Apologies, Tyler Schu from the Administration. And then we have Gabriel Lord Gabriel, um, Stuart Sakowitz. It's escaping me right now, sir, from the Department of Finance. Uh, so just a few ground rules before we get started. Um, the order of the hearing will go as such. Uh, we'll have opening remarks from the Chair, as well as the bill sponsor, which will be also the Administration and Councilman Blanchard. And then from there, we'll have agency reports, and then questions from the council members, then followed by a testimony from the general public. Um, if you have not done so already, please sign up in the rear to actually do testimony if you would like to. And if you're online, you just have to use the raise hand function in order to be recognized for it. In order that we will go is persons in, in chamber first, then persons on line, and then after that, everyone has a three-minute time limit. Uh, we will display the three minutes for you, so that we are fair and transparent about it, but everyone has a three-minute time limit. And if you have anything that you have submitted to the committee, you can refer to that and then just summarize your remarks that way as well. Um, everyone's good? Perfect. And we also have Hillary Rully from the Law Department. I still forgot, too, my friend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Perfect. Uh, we will begin, um, with, I'm gonna just skip my own comments, and we will start with Councilman Blanchard of the 11th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is this an appropriate time to introduce the amendments?
You can ma- you can tell us about the bill and also the amendments that you're making as well.
Okay, excellent. Um, so, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, the Midtown Community Benefits District has existed since 1996. Um, it is a great opportunity, as all of our management authorities are, to get private, um, private money invested in helping make great public space. And I think, um, the four neighborhoods, which goes from North Avenue all the way down to the Washington Monument and out to Madison Park, um, can see the, can see the benefits of, of having that support over the last three decades. Um, the, this bill, uh, will enable Midtown to basically be reauthorized, reauthorized and restart, um, come the beginning of next fiscal year. And so I will, we'll have a lot of, I know, great testimony being given today and support, um, as well as maybe some concerns about Midtown, but I did want to give, introduce four amendments, um, to the bill, um, collaborating with, uh, the Administration, also with a lot of support from the, uh, Council President's Office and the Comptroller's Office. So, Amendment Number One, on page 12, in line 12, strike credits, and on that same page, strike in their entirety, lines 16 through 17, inclusive and substitute. Um, it is a, it's an equation. I'm not sure exactly how to, how to read it out, but it is, um, it is in the handout. The, essentially what this amendment does is it allows, um, it allows Midtown to keep these same revenue sources that it's had for the last several years. So, homestead tax credits and targeted homeowner tax credits will be exempt. So, if you receive these tax credits, you, for your property taxes, you will also receive them from your surtax, as has been the case probably the last two years of Midtown. Um, but other tax credits that are not related to those, um, will be, uh, will not be factored into the surtax, as has been the case for the last couple of years. So, um, that is Amendment Number One. Amendment Number Two, on page 18, in line nine, after board, insert "and," and on that same page, in line 10, strike "finance" and the supervisor of the Board of Elections, and substitute "finance." Essentially, what it does is it recognizes that, um, due to the nature of how this election will work, um, the Board of Elections does not need to be, there's no requirement for the Board of Elections to be involved in this process. Uh, so it's just, it's formally removing them for the sake of not needing any redundancy there. Amendment Number Three, uh, on page 18, strike in their entirety, lines 14 through 18, inclusive and substitute, each real property tax parcel is entitled to one vote to be exercised by the owner of that real property tax parcel. So, um, this has to do with the election process, and so this is what, um, we've seen with, uh, management authorities from Downtown Partnership, Waterfront Partnership, um, the Port Covington, so now the Baltimore Peninsula, um, as well as the York Road Business Improvement District, where, um, if you own one property, you get one vote; if you own 10 properties, you get 10 votes. So, this is being inconsistent, um, with that, and that's the direction that as the Administration has moved forward in gearing up for, sort of preparing for, um, this election, this is what the, the process would be. And then Amendment Number Four, on page 18, in line 25, strike at least 10 days, but not more than 30, and substitute not more than 21 days. Uh, due to the nature, um, of the, the, the entire process from being, going through the council, to being signed by the mayor, to, um, actually having the election, to being certified, all needs to happen in enough time, so that way the surtax can go out for fiscal year 2026, which is, um, required to keep Midtown, you know, uh, continuously in existence. And so, due to the, the timeliness, uh, concern there, it's removing the max time from 30 days to 21 days, so the election process will be three weeks. Um, so, from the time that mail goes out, to the time mail goes in, um, every, all voters will have 21 days, um, to, to vote on the bill. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Perfect. Any questions for the, um, bill sponsor?
I have some.
Councilwoman Ramos.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thanks to the bill sponsor. I just want to be, like, super clear. Normally when we are, and I have, uh, Benefits District in my district for Charles Village, um, normally when we're reauthorizing these things, it's a simple, um, resolution every four years. We have a hearing, we hear from residents. This is not that. This is a totally different thing. And, um, it sounds to me that, that this had to be, why are we moving in this direction by literally having to have, um, the property owners, um, the property owners actually vote again, right? That's what I'm hearing from you, is that the residents, the property owners have to vote again to agree to be taxed in creating the Benefits District? Is that correct?
That's correct, Vice Chair.
So, they're not voting on the bill, they're voting on whether or not to be taxed, as if we're starting over, basically.
We are. That is correct, yeah. Um, and so, so the, the standard every four years, um, uh, resolution to continue Midtown was introduced, um, in May of last year. Um, it was springtime with, with several other bills. It is fairly a standard process. Um, this bill unfortunately did not make it through the council last term, and because of that, um, it was determined by the Law Department that, that the, it had lapsed, um, and so it would have to be, um, basically recreated. And so, um, this was not something that certainly I anticipated. I know the, um, the Administration was not anticipating that, so it is, it is a much bigger lift, um, and that's why we have, you know, a lot of board members and other volunteers who will be out knocking doors and phone banking and everything to, to make sure that Midtown is reauthorized, uh, this spring, um, but that is the situation we're in.
Got it. Thanks for that clarity. I have one more question for the Law Department. Um, the bill, and this is, like, so nerdy technical, I'm sorry about this, but, um, the bill is all in caps, as if it's brand-new language. Why is that, considering that this has already been in language before? Are we basically striking the old and putting in the new?
Yes.
Even though it's exactly pretty much the same as what we said before?
Yes, the old expired, and there wasn't any way to revive it, so this is all brand-new language. Of course, when you look at the code, it will look and quack the same, pretty much, but it's brand-new language, because it's brand-new language.
It's brand-new language because this is basically, we're recreating?
Yes, I mean, yes. Assuming that the 58% of the people who vote, vote in favor of it, then this will be the new language in, in the code.
And so, our role here today, uh, or whenever we vote on this, is to go ahead and establish the, the Midtown Benefits District on the contingency that 58% of the, um, property owners, not residents, property owners, uh, vote to tax themselves.
58% of the people who vote, vote yes. So, if you only had 10 people voting, you'd only need six of them to say yes. That's under the, uh, Article II, Section 63 of the City Charter.
So, we're talking, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
So, it's 58% of the people who vote?
Who are actual vote, registered voters, not just...
58% of the people who own property in the district and are able to vote?
Yeah.
It's 58% of the people who vote. You do not need everyone to vote, and you don't even need 58% of the property owners to vote. Um, under the state law, it's 58% of the votes that come back must be in favor.
Okay, that's totally different.
So, it makes sense?
So, I'm so glad that we have that, um, clear.
Yes.
Okay. Um, so, so, um, however Midtown decides to organize the voting, is 58% of those ballots, if you will, that come back in whatever form they're going to be, have to say. So, it's not 58% of all of the property owners.
Right, it's, um, and that's state law, that's in Article II of our charter. Yep.
Yep, okay. Great, thank you so much, appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Just to make sure it's clarified for the public, the threshold is 58% of the votes received.
58% of the votes received, and obviously, you can't send back a vote if you're not authorized to be a voter. So, yes, it has to be 58% of the votes received, and the people allowed to vote are what is outlined in the ordinance, people who are property owners in the district.
Thank you. Um, any other questions before we move on to the agency reports? Just Councilman Jones.
Quick question. I was wondering if someone can clarify how the boundaries are established, because, like, reading through the bill, it's not necessarily neighborhood, but like block by, by block. Any, any idea?
Um, so I think, um, Mr. Rully can correct me if I'm wrong, but these are the, it's the exact boundaries that were in the, that were, you know, previously established.
Yes, and the state law allows you to create the boundaries. So, in this particular instance, it's we're redoing what already exists. The boundaries are just what they were before, but for a brand-new district in the city, you could make the boundaries whatever you want.
And I guess the, according to state law, is what, what created those boundaries, what made those boundaries eligible?
No, um, under the state law, we're allowed to have six community benefit districts in the city. So, for example, you have Charles Village, Midtown is another one, and so on. But when you make one of those six, and you start from scratch, you could make the boundaries whatever you wanted. Under state law, there's no boundary requirements, except for Charles Village, which was the first one. That has a little bit more structure, but the other ones, the other five that aren't Charles Village, it gives the City Council the power to set the boundaries.
Got you. Thank you.
Colleagues, any other questions? Perfect, I'm gonna go with Agency Reports, Solicitor's Office.
Yes, we approve the bill and, uh, Councilman Blanchard's amendments for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you, Department of Finance.
Gabriel Stuart Sakowitz here for the Department of Finance. We do not oppose this, uh, and we stand ready to answer any questions.
Perfect. Any questions from committee members? Perfect, um, seeing none, um, we will move to public testimony then. Um, first up, we will have, I believe this is Jim Post. Um, Mr. Post, you will be given five minutes from that roster, and, you ready, Richard? Public comment? We're on public comment, Richard.
Okay. My name is, uh, James Prost. I'm a resident of, uh, Bolton Hill. I live at 205 West Landville Street, um, tax-paying property owner. I have the privilege of paying taxes to the Benefit District, and I'd like to be able to do that in the future. Uh, I'm very pleased with the services they provide. I'm involved with Midtown, particularly on the Safety Committee, and that's been very active and very, very positive in organizing the three communities, the BPD and the other security services at the, at the colleges, uh, that are in the area. Um, I think they've done a great job in serving and meeting the needs of keeping the community clean, green, and safe. Um, particularly happy with, uh, the, some of the cleanup work they've done. Um, they've, uh, kind of taken the place of Parks and Recreation and cleaning up, uh, some drug paraphernalia that were in city parks and Sumter Park. That's been very beneficial. So, I'm very pleased with what they, uh, services they've provided related to clean, green, and safe, and I'd be delighted to vouch for the organization and, uh, hopefully have it reconfirmed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sabrina Harris.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the committee, neighbors, and friends. My name is Sabrina Harris, and I am a Baltimorean who has lived all around Baltimore City, and I currently am a resident of the Mount Vernon community, who is, and I am actively involved in supporting the efforts to make our neighborhoods stronger and better, and places a better place for us to live and to work and to shop. I understand the value that Midtown brings, not only to Mount Vernon, but to our sister communities, Bolton Hill, Charles North, Madison Park, and that together, this community Benefit District, its foundation and our voices and our mission is to provide security and sanitation services through Midtown. One of the strengths of having one of the few community benefit districts in the nation is its bottom-up, community-based approach, as opposed to top-down framework. I walk the community daily, and I use public, um, transportation on one of the major corridors in my community, and I have seen trash and litter on a consistent basis that should be the focus of the community Benefits District cleaning efforts, to be more effective and robust, to avoid what we are currently seeing, and that is dirty sidewalks, gutters, tree wells, weeds, overflowing trash cans that causes residents to throw garbage on the sidewalks, and also, not to mention, it causes an increase in rodents. So, um, security services are supposed to be, um, available as well, but we're noticing that evening patrols, um, where they patrol and have to call 911, if problems arise, are nonexistent or difficult to see. A regular sweeping of all the streets and code enforcement facilitated in partnership with the community and the city's Code Enforcement Division can make a meaningful impact on violators and improving our public spaces. I love Mount Vernon for its diversity of people from all income levels, the beauty of building compromising of its physical spaces, and the active public realm. This feeling is again mirrored by our three sister communities, Bolton Hill, Charles North, and Madison Park, and we need to all work together collectively for our communities to remain healthy. Thus, our Community Benefits District shall remain focused on its goals and prioritize the management to keep our communities clean, green, and safe. As part of the authorization, I and my neighbor, neighbors, want a refocus on the mission of Midtown, clean, green, and safe communities. We would like all funds available to be directed to this mission with the appropriate staff to provide supervision and support. So, I thank you all for the opportunity for me to testify why, why, why this authorization is important to our communities and not only to Mount Vernon, but our sister communities as well, and to please take into consideration my comments to refocus the mission of Midtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Harris. Um, we're now joined by Councilman Antonio Glover of the 13th District. Um, next we will have Nicholas Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Torrance, President Cohen, honorable members of the committee. For the record, my name is Nicholas Cohen, and I have the pleasure of serving as the Chair of the Midtown Community Benefits District. I'm a homeowner in Madison Park, and I work as an arts nonprofit executive housed at the Motor House near the corner of North Avenue and Howard Street in the Charles North neighborhood. Almost every day, I walk through or drive the four Midtown neighborhoods on my way to work or just for pleasure, Bolton Hill, Madison Park, Mount Vernon, and Charles North. And I see firsthand how Midtown's initiatives uplift and connect our communities. I take notice of the presence that Midtown has built over the years, and it has made a significant difference to the quality of life for all that reside in its footprint. Specifically, the North Avenue corridor has been transformed over the past five years, particularly between Mount Vernon and Greymount West. Much of this progress stems from Midtown's work to operationalize our services and ensure that every corner of the district receives a high level of attention. Additionally, pursuant to our legislative charter, Midtown invests in critical programs beyond baseline city efforts, often funded outside of surtax dollars, to further and strengthen our mission. A prime example of this is our Workforce Development Program, known as Building Ongoing Opportunities Team, or Boot. In partnership with Living Classrooms, Roca, and Johns Hopkins University, Boot transforms participants with six months of hands-on training, wraparound services, and direct pathways to permanent full-time employment, either with Midtown or hopefully with the city. By investing in our neighbors through street cleaning, graffiti removal, event support, and more, we fulfill the priorities established by our board and outlined in our enabling legislation. Every success we see, cleaner sidewalks, revitalized public spaces, stronger small businesses, well, this is a testament to Midtown's statutory responsibility to improve quality of life and encourage economic vitality in our district. Our framework ensures that each neighborhood receives equitable, comprehensive services, reflecting the spirit of our charter, which calls for enhanced safety, cleanliness, and greener spaces. Now, more than ever, Midtown's work is indispensable to the health of Baltimore's core neighborhoods. With that said, I respectfully urge the, the committee's support of the authorization of the Midtown Community Benefits District, and by doing so, you infer, uh, affirm the importance of a proven model that is our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Next is Mr. Eric Souza.
Good afternoon. Honorable Chairman Torrance and distinguished members of the committee, my name is Eric Souza, and I serve as the President of the Midtown Community Benefits District. I've been a resident of Baltimore City for over 22 years, and it's an honor to stand before you today in support of the authorization of the Midtown Community Benefits District. As the President of the organization, I've had the privilege of serving four dynamic and distinct communities through clean, green, safe initiatives. Midtown's work is not simply about maintaining these initiatives for our neighborhoods. Its goal is to elevate, empower, and transform them. Over the past three years, we've evolved in a multitude of ways to better serve our communities. Within the first 60 days as President of the organization, I began utilizing Midtown's board-adopted 2019 organizational plan as my North Star to ensure I was carrying out the board's vision for our overall mission. That mission encompassed workforce development programming, expanding our operational budget through grants, and fostering deeper partnerships and opportunities with groups we had yet to connect with. By aligning our initiatives with the strategic plan, we have been able to strengthen our foundation and amplify our impact, making a tangible difference in the communities we serve. Midtown has professionalized its services to the four communities in a number of ways. This work began in 2021 with the onboarding of the nation's leading operational service provider, marking the first step towards creating a culture of consistency, efficiency, accountability, and buy-in from the staff. That not only worked in the communities that we, uh, took care of, but also made them feel like they were a part of them. This professionalization was followed by the onboarding of a commercial landscaping vendor, safety hospitality vendor, and the other partners, to ensure Midtown's 2019 organizational plan blossomed into an action plan that produced results year after year. Our strategic vendor management platform ensures that all four communities in Midtown are seeing the same level of service, investment, resources, and opportunities that have traditionally benefited only a privileged few. I am laser-focused on closing these gaps and ensuring that every resident experiences the full promise of a thriving Baltimore. Since 2022, Midtown has incorporated innovative approaches to foster strong support for clean, green, and safe initiatives. For example, our partners with Central Baltimore Partnership, the Mayor's Office, and West North Avenue Development Authority have helped us provide artistic and cultural opportunities that support cleaner, greener, and safer public spaces for our communities to utilize. Examples of these efforts include the Maryland Avenue Bridge mural, Trenton Alley murals, and the upcoming Pocket Park along North Avenue, all which align with our core mission of clean, green, and safe. To further illustrate our operational impact, alley services increased by 18.46%. Our vacuum, our riding vacuum operations increased by 23%. Our bulk trash removal services have had, our efforts have expanded by 68%, and our graffiti removal services have seen a 94% review.
Your time is up, sir.
Okay.
Just, you can, I'll give you additional 30 seconds. I know you're trying to finish.
Uh, just, uh, we're committed to providing the innovative and impactful community empowerment programs that elevate every corner of our district. The Midtown Community Benefits District is more than an entity, it's a collective force of residents and stakeholders working together to make our communities safer, cleaner, and more vibrant. It's an honor to play a participatory role in shaping the future, not just of the four communities we serve, but for Baltimore as a whole. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. I urge your continued support for the authorization of Midtown, and I look forward to working together to build a stronger, more equitable Baltimore.
Thank you, Ms. Souza. I'm gonna move forward with Ms. Sarah Holly.
Hello. My name is Sarah Holly, and I own the property at 1912 Utah Place. I've owned that property since 1992, and from what I've been hearing, it appears as if I must be in the wrong place. Since I've been there, no, let me start, let me back up. When this initiative was first started, when this initiative was first started, um, it was wonderful. We were told that we would get escort service from 10:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m. If you needed to go to the store, if you need to be picked up from the, uh, train station, you could actually have that. We would have security service round the clock, security service. There were two vehicles that were purchased to make sure that that happened. Uh, we were told that the alleys would be cleaned every, well, three days a week. We were told that the front would be cleaned, uh, every day. Those are just some of the things that were promised, and I'm sure that it's in the, the paperwork that you have. From what I've heard so far, I'm in a, I'm, I live in a different place, obviously, because that's not happening now. You know, I call down to Midtown all the time, saying, "Someone, please come and clean the, uh, the alley." I call down to Midtown to say, "Someone, please come and clean the front." I call down to Midtown and say, "Have someone, please come and, um, clean, clean up." That's what we were promised. We're not getting that now, at least not at 1912 Utah Place. I also own 1805 Madison Avenue. The same thing is there. Calling, asking, requesting that things be done that you're actually paying for is kind of tiring. The alley behind the 1800 block of, uh, Madison Avenue and the alley behind the 1900 block and 1800 block of Utah Place is atrocious all the time, all the time. So, something is very wrong here. I suggest that we either have Midtown get on the ball, or we just scrap it and just let the city do what Midtown is supposed to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. Next, we will have Dennis Richter.
Good afternoon. Thank you for being able to speak this afternoon. My name is Dennis Richter. I'm a resident of Mount Vernon since over 10 years. I'm also own property in Mount Vernon, have my business there, and also own properties in Charles North. I'm both on the Charles North, uh, Community Board, also, as well as Mount Vernon. I'm both on the Charles North Community Board, also as well as Mount Vernon. I work with a lot of small business owners from a landlord perspective, also from a community perspective. I am supporting the reauthorization, but with some comments in regard to a realignment that, in my opinion, needs to take place. As a property owner, I think overall property is overtaxed in Baltimore City and that overtax through property taxes has to all be passed on to small business and residential tenants. And that has become very burdensome. There are a lot of costs that have come up for property, to manage property, insurance, heating, air conditioning, all these factors that have increased significantly. Within that, I still believe that Midtown plays an important part in terms of keeping the Midtown District viable and attractive for residential and commercial needs. I would say that over the years, Midtown has somewhat moved away from their core mission and I think there needs to be a realignment. Part of the realignment has to go back to the green, clean and safety aspect. Also, I would want to point out, a lot of services that Midtown has to provide are really the responsibility of Baltimore City. So a lot of the basic requirements that Midtown is now taking care of is really something that Baltimore City should be taking care of. And the regular property tax should be handling that. And there needs to be a reassessment from the Baltimore City, their commitment towards Midtown, so that not more and more funds go away from the additional services that Midtown could offer. So because we are all being taxed heavily as property owners, I think that in order, there needs to be that change in order for property owners to again have confidence in the forward mission in terms of why Midtown was created to begin with. So those kinds of the aspects that I want to point out. I live and, like I said, in Mount Vernon. I think the cleaning in the street, you know, all these aspects are very vital especially from a tourist perspective for Mount Vernon. A lot of visitors coming from other parts of the country, other countries. And how we come across that experience is very important, how Baltimore looks overall. Because those are the experiences that these visitors take back and how we can sell, and it's important how we sell our city overall for those purposes. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We're going to go with, I believe this is Chris Regan next.
Good afternoon. Thank you for this time. So I'm a resident in Mount Vernon. I live at 824 Park Avenue with my wife and two children. I've been a resident of Mount Vernon for about 25 years. Have been a local developer and have renovated at least 20 buildings in Mount Vernon starting in 2000. Currently working on a project in Pig Town. And I am a dissatisfied customer of Midtown and frankly, of Baltimore City. I do want to see it reauthorized, but I do believe like others that a focus on services, primarily on cleaning and somewhat on safety should be a high priority. We've seen over the years, these services go down. I would say that I was very impressed with Midtown going back, you know, probably 10 to 15 years ago and even got to know many of the people that would be doing the work on a day-to-day basis. And there was a real connection and a real presence that we would see all the time. And we didn't nearly have to report issues back then because they would be noticed and they would be addressed. And if you called them in, they'd say, we know about it. We're going to address it this week. So we've seen that go backwards over the years. And in one instance, we've been working on the same exact issue for four years. One location, violations by landlords. I am one, I am a landlord, but we know how to handle our trash. Four years and we haven't gotten the results that we deserve. We are paying the city, we are paying Midtown. And now I understand that we are also paying a third-party contractor to do the job that Midtown was authorized to do with the money that we provide them. I would also say that code enforcement has really dropped off. And I believe code enforcement in conjunction with Midtown is really the winning combination that we need that would allow citizens to have faith that these services would be regularly met without so much involvement on our part. We really want this organization to thrive. I will say that after reading Stephen Shen's letter, I was very dismayed to learn that the third-party contractor was brought on and lots of the efforts of many people were pushed to the wayside when many of the equipment was sold and many of the employees that worked directly for Midtown were no longer working for Midtown. And I think that is part and parcel with when the services started to fall off and the quality started to drop. It's noticeable and it doesn't pass the eye test. And I hope that we can put some accountability in place and bring the focus back to why Midtown is really there and who they're there to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Regan. I'm going to go with Potem Sinis. Is it Fautini? Apologies if I said your name incorrectly.
Fautini Sinis. Thank you, city council members. I'm a resident of Mount Vernon. Lived there about 13 years. I own a house and we have some rental property there. I've also served on the Mount Vernon Community Board twice. And in my second duty service, I was head of the Trash Committee. So as head of the Trash Committee, I mean, I took that on because I live on Park Avenue and the trash on Park Avenue has just been abysmal. And I've noticed a significant decline in service over the last 13 years. This didn't used to be and over the last four or five years, it is. We have many buildings that are all rental units where landlords are, you know, sometimes it's even hard to find who the landlords are because there's, you know, a shell company involved or whatever. So we can't talk directly to someone and they just, the property managers just tell the residents to put their trash in the tree wells or on the sidewalk. And it's a huge problem. And I agree with Chris that there needs, so I think Midtown has to be involved in this and it's been hard to get them to be involved in this. And I think that they need to work with the city government to get code enforcement in and get these property owners to straighten out because it's just not happening. We have, you know, we residents who have full-time jobs have been filing 311s, trying to talk to lawyers, et cetera, and that's just not appropriate. So I would, though I favor sort of renewing the contract, I think they have to be held accountable. They are accountable to us, the residents of the community. And I would urge you to change the wording of the legislation to somehow make them accountable, to keep our community clean. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're going to go with Lao Nash.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Yes. Get a little close here. Sorry, I'm afraid not much of an orator, but I'll do my best. I live in Mount Vernon. My name is Lyle Nash. My wife and I own a house in the corner of Park and West Madison Street. We've been there for about 25 years. And maybe I'll just start with an anecdote. There used to be a woman who worked for Midtown. She was one of their direct employees and she always worked in our area. And we knew her, we talked to her. And she always kind of caught things ahead of time and, sorry. And she was always there, always pointing things out for us and talking to us. And we knew her. She was part of our community. And I remember, and I guess I'm not as involved in the community as I should be. One day she was gone and I asked what happened to her and they said that she'd been replaced and they didn't clarify much. And I found out later that she was one of the full-time employees that had been removed and replaced with a contractor. I can tell you from my own experience that from that day on, the trash just doesn't go away. It just builds up all the time. Now, if you look at Charles Street, because I'm over on Park and West Madison Street, if you go to Charles, it looks good. And if you look at some of the major arteries, it looks pretty nice. But the farther away you get from those main areas, the trash just doesn't move. It stays there, right? And there are a lot of little things. We were told we were going to have trees planted, green trees, and they planted a few. We were also told that we were going to have bags for those trees and they would be watered regularly. So many of these little trees are dying across our neighborhood because there were never any bags and there was never any watering. So these are the things that kind of stand out to a simple person like myself. I understand that it's important to have high ideals and that we want to do things that are really important for the community. But we also have with Midtown a core mission. And I would argue that if you can't meet your core mission, if you can't do the things that you're supposed to do, the basic things, that you have to wait before you move on to the bigger or more important things or the idealistic things. They're also important. And I would also, again, just going back to this woman who was kind of part of our life. If we talk about equity and we talk about wanting to work with the community, that's a person who now doesn't have a job. And I don't know what she's doing now, but there are a whole group of those people who are now, you know, Baltimoreans with a job that didn't have one after that. And it was a living wage and it was something that she could do that she had enjoyed. She was part of our community. So that's kind of my personal point of view. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. We're going to go with George Borazikas.
Thank you, Chairman Torrance and members of the council for organizing this hearing and taking my testimony. My name is George Borazikas. I have lived in Mount Vernon for the past 13 years. My family and I own the house there. And over these years, I have witnessed a dramatic deterioration in the services provided by the Midtown Development Corporation, whose mandate is, we're told to keep the place clean, green and safe. So do they keep it clean? No, they don't. Street cleaning has gone downhill in the time I've been there. Mr. Nash told the story of our street cleaner who was fired and replaced by a corporation that needs to make a cut. And I can tell you that this particular woman is fine, she retired. I saw her afterwards, but I don't know what happened to everybody else. Our streets are certainly not clean since then, since these people were fired. We're supposed to have street cleaning once a day, five days a week. That's a joke. We rarely ever see these people, certainly not every day, not every week even. And, you know, one wonders, how can one get a better service when you introduce a middleman instead of doing the job yourself? You're basically getting employees who are not interested in the jobs and who, there's a huge turnover here. This is, it's a disaster. Many of the services that Midtown used to provide, like bulk trash pickup, et cetera, have deteriorated. I don't, I no longer get bothered with Midtown for bulk trash. And finally, Midtown is not really a facilitator when neighbors report violations around trash issues. They should be. That's what the job is. They should be following up with the city. They should be following up with code enforcement, but they don't. We have to do everything and we pay taxes for it. Let's look at green. Again, not a great job. They casually plant trees without taking into account what trees would bend, what trees would be good for our neighborhood, what would flourish in our neighborhood. And they certainly don't take care of the trees afterwards. They used to water them. They don't anymore. The survival rate of trees has gone way down since the last few years. And you can see that just by walking around, looking at all the saplings that have dried out because they have to make it through a hot Baltimore summer with no water. Safe, I wouldn't really go into because the city overall is safer. I don't think it has anything to do with Midtown because they stopped any safety patrols they used to have, et cetera. But again, this is something that I don't think should be a priority right now. And what does Midtown do instead? Well, instead, they embark upon projects of dubious merit.
I'm sorry, Mr. Borazikas, if you can wrap it up shortly.
I'm sorry.
You're over. The time is over, but if you can wrap it up shortly. I'll give you 30 seconds.
Thank you. So they embark upon projects that are not really useful for the community. They let capital equipment, such as garbage trucks, et cetera, crumble and they say that fires sales. And what I hear the city council to do is to make them accountable. To, when you renegotiate their contract, to put meaningful metrics in there that are designed in cooperation with the community and that's not just numbers that Midtown pulls out of a hat, like numbers that tons of trash picked up, et cetera. To come up with metrics that actually work. And if those are not met, to either fire the principal, start fresh or just disband Midtown altogether. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Borazikas. I just have a question for the law department because the questions are raised about accountability. Do we have a contract with Midtown once they're established, once again?
Yes, you have to have an MOU between the city and the benefits district under the legislation.
And I don't see Ty Lord here, but I would encourage the members of the community to reach out to not only your council persons, but also to the administration about what does that look like for that contract? Since I hear the theme, I just want to come up with a solution before we leave. I hear that people want to have this reauthorized. So I just want to make sure that we get a clean bill out tonight, send us a BOE tomorrow and then we can get you authorized, get the vote done and you can discuss what that contract looks like. So everyone is on the same page. So I'm going to go next with Mary Ann Henderson as well.
Hi. I'm Mary Ann Henderson and I'm with the Midtown area. I live in Mount Vernon. I'm listening to all this today and it's gotten me all jacked up here. The reason I wanted to come here today was just to express my support, obviously, for the continuation of the benefits district. I do want to also express concerns and I was going to, my note said, you will hear it from others, but I went after them, so you have heard it from others. What I think you've heard over and over again is that the organization needs to focus on its original mission, maintaining four neighborhoods. You know what they are? Mount Vernon, Charles North, Bolton Hill, Madison Park. What I would like to see now is that the organization work at achieving the highest level of service. And that means focusing on clean, green and safe. Without it, we cannot maintain these neighborhoods. We all know already that city services are simply not sufficient and there's a reason for that. And the reason is that we live in highly dense neighborhoods. We have multifamily dwellings. We have commercial districts. We have high-rise apartments. We generate a lot more need for services than anybody, well, most people. And so I wanted to mention that I actually was here at the very beginning, 1996, when Midtown was developed. I worked with Meb Turner. Some of the older folks might know who that is. He was the president of Baltimore, University of Baltimore. Charlie Duff, another name everybody knows. We contacted hundreds of neighborhoods in these four communities. I was happy that she was mentioning about our sister communities, which is so critical, Charles North and Madison Park, that we all work together to make these inner-city neighborhoods as good as possible. What we did, the reason that we created Midtown was we wanted to maintain a good quality of life. And the only way we could really do it is focus on the issues that we've talked about today. Keeping it clean, keeping it green, working on safety issues as well. And today, I think we're all here acknowledging that we are struggling to get back on course. I recently joined the board of Midtown and I can tell you right now, I'm committed to help that happen. And I'm not alone in this commitment. There are many other board members who feel that we really need to evaluate what we've done, look at what works, what does not work. I know folks here today have raised a lot of issues which I won't go over again. which I won't go over again. I know that you have, I've seen some of the scathing emails that you've received with people who are dissatisfied with how Midtown functions. And people never like to pay extra taxes, it's just a given. One thing I do want to say to you, and I said, I underline this because I said, "I want you to remember this more than anything else." I've lived in Mount Vernon. I lived here 20 years before Midtown was created. So I moved here, I was very young, 1976. And they don't know what it was like. It was pretty, pretty bad. I remember going out and cleaning up alleys, you know, sweeping the fronts, you know, struggling. We had volunteers everywhere trying to keep the neighborhood clean, but we just simply could not do it alone. And so what I want you to know is that Midtown is really the backbone. I think we can fix it, I think we can make it better. I think we have people right now on the board who really want to see that happen. We're going to get back to the mission. And I can tell you right now, I'll do everything I can to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. I'm going to go with Jack Danan next. Jack?
Good evening, Chairman, and members of the committee, and friends and neighbors. My name is Jack Danan, President of the Mount Vernon Velveteer Association. I'm on behalf of the association. I'm here this evening to testify in support of the Baltimore City Council Bill 95613 for the purpose of renewing the Midtown Community Benefits District and its authority. Our support for the authorization of the Midtown Community Benefits District is predicated on a few conditions to be noted in the public record and to be considered for possible amendments to the final legislation. These conditions have been integral to some of the testimony provided by the residents this evening. They are, one, the Midtown Community Benefits District must prioritize its core mission, clean, green, safe, and hand services that are underwritten by the surcharge, and that may require tightened legislation to ensure they are central to the organization's mission. Two, the Midtown Community Benefits District conduct an external evaluation of its block-by-block contract to determine effectiveness. And three, the Midtown Community Benefits District leadership and its board are responsive to the concerns of its constituents as expressed in condition one. I'll shorten my comments, but for some contextual information, over the last two years, we have heard from many constituents that the Community Benefits District has migrated from its core mission. Underwritten by the surcharge to provide high-quality enhanced services, the core clean, green, and safe functions were identified through a thoughtful grassroots planning process that led to the creation of the authority in 1996. These enhanced services are relevant today as they were in 1996. They play a vital and central role in providing healthy and vibrant communities. In 2002, the organization published a Midtown Community Plan that was authored by Charlie Duff, the extensive input and participation from our four communities in Midtown. This plan launched the assumption that the Community Benefits District, we continue to focus on its core mission, clean and green, safe and enhanced services. The Midtown Community Master Plan, one of the few that have been gendered in city law, built on those understood goals. We urge that the enhanced services of the key focus of Midtown's work and mission continue. I'll be brief. The Midtown Community Benefits District has served four communities for over 30 years. Of course, there have been accomplishments along the way, some recently. But there's a turning point for the organization and a time to reevaluate what is working and what is not. We hope you will support us and our desire to have a stronger, better-performing Midtown Community Benefits District. The Midtown Community Benefits District that is focused on its core mission, that is responsible to its residents, and makes it a goal to maintain our neighborhoods to the highest standard possible.
Mr. Danan, I want to give you 30 more seconds.
Thank you. Support the authorization, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Danan. That concludes the persons who have signed up. Is there anyone else present in the chamber under the sound of my voice that would like to testify? Last call. Seeing none. We'll now go to persons who are participating online. If you would like to provide testimony, please use the raise hand function, and then we will unmute you so that you will also get three minutes to testify as well. Seeing no person with a raise hands function, that will conclude public testimony. With that being said, there are amendments before the committee. Would any member entertain a motion to move the amendments?
Move the amendments?
A motion has been made by Councilwoman Ramos to move the amendments. Is there a second, seconded by Councilman Antonio Glover at this time? We can do a roll call, Richard.
Mr. Chair, we're doing all of them together as a package?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine.
Without objection. Without objection, we will move forward with all of the actual amendments, all four. Just for the public's consumption, we will read them again. Amendment number one, on page 12, in line 12, strike credits. And on the same page, strike their entirety lines 16 through 17, inclusive and substitute. Here's the equation: assessment property minus, in parentheses, the homestead tax credit plus the targeted homeowner's tax credit, closed parentheses, equals assessment amount owed. Basically, please excuse my dear Aunt Sally to come up with the new number. On amendment number two, on page 18, in line nine, after board, insert "and," A-N-D. And on the same page, in line 10, strike finance and the supervision of the Board of Elections, and substitute finance. Amendment number three, on page 18, strike in their entirety lines 14 through 18, inclusive and substitute. Each real property tax parcel is entitled to one vote to be exercised by the owner of the real property tax parcel. Amendment number four, on page 18, in line 25, strike at least 10 days, but not more than 30. Again, on page 18, in line 25, strike at least 10 days, but not more than 30, and substitute not more than 21, and substitute not more than 21, once again. Those are the four amendments before the committee. We had, it was moved by Ramos, seconded by Glover. Ready for roll call.
Chair Torrance.
Aye.
Chair Torrance votes aye. Vice Chair Ramos. Vice Chair Ramos votes aye. Mr. Blanchard.
Aye.
Mr. Blanchard votes aye. Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Jones votes aye. Mr. Glover.
Yes.
Mr. Glover votes aye. Mr. Chatter, five votes, any affirmative, no negatives. The amendment is agreed to.
Thank you. The bill has now been amended. Is there a motion to move the bill as amended?
Motion.
Second.
A motion has been made to move the bill favorably as amended, and it's been seconded, is moved by Blanchard, seconded by Ramos. Roll call, vote.
Chair Torrance.
Aye.
Chair Torrance votes aye. Vice Chair Ramos.
I'm an aye, but may I explain my vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am a firm believer in the benefits districts. I have one in my, in my district as well. I want to just make sure that the leadership of the Midtown Benefits District is hearing what we're hearing today to, you know, these are taxpayer dollars, making sure that we're, you know, that you're using them wisely. We go through the same thing in Charles Village. You know, all of the benefits districts go through the same thing to have that. The whole point of the reauthorization is that reflection time, to really look at, you know, what needs to happen. So I heard loud and clear that there needs to be some improvements. And again, this happens with every benefits district. So please take the public to heart and look forward to hearing the, you know, the results of the vote, but also to hear back from my colleague and others who have the benefits district in their districts, how the, how the improvements are going. So thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm a yes.
Vice Chair Ramos votes aye. Mr. Blanchard.
I'd like to vote and to explain my vote.
Go ahead.
So I think it is, on the, on the topic of community feedback, and a lot of consistent feedback here today, it is interesting that the first meeting that I was going to have as the council president's representative on the Midtown Board was supposed to be, was supposed to be part of a Midtown, Midtown's effort to facilitate a community engagement process, to get feedback over the course of several months, and to inform the 2025 strategic plan, which was an update from the 2020 plan. Unfortunately, things have changed, right? And so we are in the situation that we're in now. And so, you know, I just kind of want to, anyone who's expressing, you know, understandable frustration with, with how you feel, where your dollars are getting you, I think it is worth noting that, you know, if Midtown wins and is reauthorized, that, that process was being done and will be done immediately following that as well. And I think that's an important thing to, to keep in mind, so. And I vote aye.
Mr. Blanchard votes aye. Mr. Jones.
I vote aye as well, and would like to explain my vote. Just an explanation, I just want to let the community know, I hear concerns. I also encourage Midtown to, you know, incorporate those concerns moving forward because, you know, eventually we'll all be back here all over again. And this is the time to, you know, make sure while you still have a level of community support, you know, people feel like their, their issues are heard and addressed. And, you know, while I hear people have concerns, they still see the value in it. And we're under tight crunch. So I vote in support, but look forward to continuing conversations with the neighborhood, with Midtown as well, to ensure we, we have a product people feel like, you know, they see the value in, that they're paying for. So, thank you.
Your vote, Councilman?
I vote aye.
Mr. Jones votes aye. Mr. Glover.
Yes.
Mr. Glover votes aye. Mr. Chatter, five votes, any affirmative, no negatives. We can go to second reader at Monday's meeting.
Thank you. We're going to, is there any sponsor remarks? Any additional remarks? Perfect. With there being no sponsor remarks, we will move this to second reader. Just to give the public an understanding, this will have to go to the Board of Assemblies tomorrow for it to officially receive a vote. And then the council will have to receive it back from the Board of Assemblies to vote on it at a council meeting due to the urgency, more than likely for public transparency.